Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, January 22nd. Time is close enough to six o'clock. We're here at the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. And this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is recording the meeting, well, we probably should let everybody in. Good evening, everyone. Why don't we start over? We'll take it from the top. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, January 22nd. Time is now 6:02 and we're here at the Select Board Conference Room at Town Hall. Remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording the meeting, that's great. Just let Jason know. And in attendance tonight, we have myself, Doug Moglen, Vice Chairman Jason Perron, Clerk Diane Gale, CAO Steinhardt is on Zoom. Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni is right here and Lisa Anderson is in the other room. If we could at first, before we get started, if we could have a moment of silence, please, for Alexander Butch Monzka of Reserve and full-time police officer who recently passed away. So he was also a member of our emergency management. So if we could take a moment to respect him. Thank you. Chief, would you do the honors of leading us in the pledge tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is public comments. If anybody in the audience or on Zoom would like to address the Select Board with an issue that's not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. We'll start, why don't we start with Zoom tonight first? Anyone on Zoom? Hearing none in the room. Anyone? Once, twice? Okay. So we'll go to, we'll pretty close to schedule, 6:05 PM liquor license update from State Line Plaza. Joe and Lydia Barry. I'm assuming that's you.
That's us.
Come on up.
We don't really have anything to say.
That's okay.
We just wanted to see what was going on here.
Okay. Okay, we were just invited, that's all.
We just wanted to invite you in and kind of say hello and catch up. It's been a while.
Get familiarized. Some of us don't know you very well.
Correct.
So.
I'm Joe Lynn.
Joe, Jason Perron.
Doug Moglen.
Hi Doug.
Jason.
Meet you.
Diane.
Diane.
Nice to meet you.
Nadine. Nice to meet you.
What we're doing is we're having every licensed establishment come in just to say hello, check in, put names to faces and just get caught up.
Any updates?
Any updates, any news, anything going on, that kind of stuff?
We're just coasting along down there.
Everything's going all right?
Oh, yeah.
Could always be better, but you can't be greedy.
You guys got interesting nights that you're busy over there. It's interesting. I go by, I go to the gym sometimes and you with like Tuesdays or Wednesday. It's very interesting. It's good.
Yeah.
Yes.
How long have you owned the place?
It'll be 20 years in May.
Really that long?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you're getting that old.
No, I remember, I thought I remember when you guys took it over, I think. Oh, boy. I gotta stop asking that question for the next folks that come in.
May 7th at 4:00 PM.
I must have been on the planning board. Had to be. I just remember that we changed some signage and did some other stuff and we had discussions about that parking lot because it's kind of neat with it. The plow guys in Connecticut use a good chunk of it for a turnaround, if I remember right.
They wanted to condemn it on us.
It's grabbing.
And it literally is the state line bar because the parking lot is you don't know where the line is, right? It sure does. It sure does. So we just wanted everybody to come in, kind of put names, like I said, names to faces and, you know, we haven't had any.
If you don't mind me interrupting.
By all means.
I kind of brought it up, you know, several months ago, people have come to me, were concerned about, you know, wanting to open up places, licenses that were, weren't available or licenses that we didn't know what was really going on with. So that's really why I brought it forward. It wasn't anything to to really punish anybody contrary to what other people thought. And I just really wanted to get familiar with everything. And what's even more interesting is we went to the municipal association conference and there's all sorts of new stuff coming, right? Where we're gonna have more, it sounds like we're gonna have more.
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah, the possibility of a little more.
There's gonna be noise about it.
Flexibility, maybe flexibility, maybe not, we don't know. But it sounds like it might be a little bit more beneficial what's coming down from the state, but we'll see. So just basically, that's why this all started up. It was, it was my.
Refreshing the list.
Well, we have so many liquor licenses that are allocated by population to each town. And I think we're actually one over according to the
We are.
To the rules, but we're allowed to have what we have. But we don't have any ability to issue anymore without a special act of legislation. And that's for any city or town. And that's burdensome in some communities where, you know, you might want to have a restaurant district or some other, you know, a larger city or town and you don't have any, you know, licenses to go, to go out. And the only way to get it is to go for a special act of legislature or stuff like that.
Or buy it from someone who has one already.
Correct, but that's still net-net is the same number of establishments that you have. You know, we've been down this road a few times with different, you know, we had a request a few years ago for an off-premise license for a beer and wine license, basically. And we turned somebody down and went all the way to A, B, C, C on the appeal and the town was successful and in that appeal, we felt that the town was being adequately served with the places we had. So we didn't see a need to issue another one. That's probably, it certainly wasn't 20 years ago, but it might've been four or five that we went down that path. But, you know, we just wanted to, you know, get everybody to come in and, you know, kind of go over the rules of the road. You know, a lot of times we have a change of, you know, if we have change of manager and and someone comes in and they always get kind of a little refresher of what's going on and, you know, this board's kind of zero tolerance policy for any kind of problems with, you know, the ABC comes in and does those underage deals and that type of thing. And, you know, we don't take those very lightly at all. And when there's a problem, the reaction from this board is usually swift and no fun. We've had zero complaints from you guys. So I don't want to convey the wrong message here at all. But I just figured we, again, we've had two new members in the last two years and I was on a whole different board when you guys had come in. So I wasn't on this board when you were granted your license. So I figured it was just time to say hi. And, uh, no, welcome to you. You know, we appreciate all you're doing. Like I said, zero complaints. How are your, um, your, are you guys open a lot of days a week, a few days a week on average? I do not drive by your place every day, just only when I'm going back and forth to Connecticut.
Close on Sundays and Mondays.
Yep.
Go like that every day.
Awesome. And since COVID, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Long years, you're closed on Sundays?
No, we open on Sundays sometime.
I was gonna ask seasonally, do you change that? Because it's listed as Sunday.
Yeah, yeah.
You could change it seasonally.
Well, it's not seasonally, it's just
Whether it doesn't.
Yeah, things like that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was gonna bring that up. I mean, it's kind of been a recurring theme. You know, everyone's license has their hours on it, but since COVID, everybody's hours have been screwy.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Right? I don't, I would, I would wager that, when is their hours until on?
2:00 AM.
Yeah, I'm wagering you guys aren't there till 2:00 in the morning every day.
Right? We close early if there's no one there.
Right. So I don't, I don't think it's disparate from, from anyone else. I've seen it with other, other establishments.
Even one town north where I work and I work on that shift, everything's changed since COVID. It's
The nightlife is not.
There is, there is no doubt.
There is no doubt.
Not at all like it used to be. I don't think you're ever gonna see it come back for some reason, unfortunately.
Bones, everything's fallen.
Well, you can, well, you can hold your alcohol to your, right in your house now too, so.
Yep.
Yeah, that was one other thing that was mentioned at Mass Municipal about making to-go stuff and some restaurant outdoor dining stuff more permanent because that stuff has expired under the, under the COVID rules, but they were talking about bringing that back. But a long way to go legislatively than what the governor always wants. So we'll see. Do you have any questions for us?
I think we're good.
Life is good.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear it. Well, thank you very much for coming in. We do appreciate it.
Thank you for inviting us and very nice meeting all you.
We'll have to do it again sometime.
Stop in. We'll stay in touch.
It's an even better, I think.
Good.
Have a great year.
Have a good night.
Okay, thanks.
Much success. 6:10 liquor license update from the launch. Jessica and Mark Robling.
Hi, I'm on Zoom, but I can't seem to get my camera going. How are you guys?
Oh, good. I was hoping you were gonna chime in.
Yep, sorry.
I saw Jessica and I figured it was you.
It's me.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks. How about you?
Good. Were you here for the rest of the discussion we just had with the state line a moment ago?
I did, yes.
So I don't have to repeat myself for everybody hearing on Zoom?
No, I think we're good.
How are things going over there?
Good, no complaints. Things are great. Post-COVID, we are only open four days a week. When we used to be open for six, the four are working. So we plan on maintaining that. We do the Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. We open at eight instead of six, which doesn't really affect the liquor license because our serving never started till nine, even pre-COVID. Yeah, I'd say our liquor and beer sales maybe account for 4% of our total sales for the year. So we're not, we're not moving, moving big bottles out of there.
Is anyone on your staff tip certified?
Yes, all of our servers are.
And what was those hours again? Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. We open at eight. We close at 2:00 on Fridays and Monday and 2:30 on Saturdays and Sundays.
And is that year-round or is that seasonal?
No, it is year-round. We usually close for three weeks, President's Day till the middle of March, but that's our vacation.
Questions, comments, no concerns?
They don't, if she's upset and doesn't have any of us.
I'm good. She answered both questions, so.
Do you have any questions for us, Jessica?
I don't. We love our location. It's been a good six years. I can't believe it's flown since the last time I was in front of the board when we got the license and I don't know, we're gonna just keep going.
Please do.
All I got.
Alrighty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, let's pay some bills. Acknowledged payables warrant number 2417B dated January 8th in the amount of $165,946. Acknowledged payroll warrant number 2415 dated 1/16/24 in the amount of $340,401.37. And acknowledge and approve open session minutes from January the 8th. Did we receive them yet? We'll table those till next week. And do we have exec session minutes? Want to make a motion to approve them?
Diane, I'm set. Let's go, you want to set?
Yes, sir, I am.
I will make the motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from 1/8/2024.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, approve the donation of $465.50 to the animal control gift account and medical gift fund from L. Hardy, $100, H. Heiden, $40, S. Deo, $25. Oh, boy. S. Waitrich, $100 and Interstate Building Supply, $200.50. May I have a motion, please?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
You skipped that.
Hmm?
You skipped that.
Yep, it's 6:30. I'm gonna try to run close to time on that.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Every now and then I kind of think I know what I'm doing. Yeah, did we vote through on that? I think we're good.
Yes, we did.
Okay. And to, I need a motion to accept the donation from Andrew Gale for 15 new flags to the town of Southwick.
It's actually 12. Flags.
Did two of them get ripped and now we have 15?
No, that was three, but no, it was 12. It's a mistake.
Okay, so it will amend the agenda to 12 because the letter I have from Randy Brown says 12. So I need a motion to, well, it's still a fantastic donation and much appreciated. So I need a motion to accept this donation of 12 American flags from Andrew and Diane Gale of Five Point Grove.
I'll make that motion to accept the flags.
I'll second it just for us. Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Do I vote that?
It's a donation. I have no objection if you do.
Thank you, Diane and Andrew.
Much, much appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And we also received a letter from Randy Brown thanking you both for saying from DPW would like to recognize and thank Andrew and Diane Gale for the donation of 12 flags. We have an elderly sewer rate application for 24 rails and road. We need a motion to approve.
Make the motion to approve the elderly sewer rate.
I'll second that.
Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay, next we have a letter from Randy Brown, who I see on Zoom. Dated January 12th, on January 4th, DPW opened bids for the following projects fiscal year, 24 surface treatments on Pearl Brook, Hidden Place, Great Brook Lane, Great Brook Drive, Red Oak Drive, Shagbar Drive and Hummel Lane. And they received one bid in the total of $187,490. Indus has worked with the town on several surface treatments in the town hall, all with positive results. Total project cost is approximately $200,000, including police details and other miscellaneous costs. Project is funded through a previously approved Chapter 90 allocation of $245,000. Full Chapter 90 allocation will likely not be needed to complete this project. So once the project's complete, DPW will discuss reallocating any unused funds towards other projects with the Select Board. And Randy, do you want to give us your recommendation, please?
Yeah, thank you. Recommendation would be to award the contract to Indus per their, per their bid price.
And I would ask a favor of the board that we take this in two separate votes in, for the for this, only for the purpose of my disclosure that I'm a resident of Hidden Place, which is off Pearl Brook. So I'd like one motion for Great Brook Lane, Great Brook Drive, Red Oak Drive, Shagbar Drive and Hummel Lane.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Moglen, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
And then a second motion for Pearl Brook Drive and Hidden Place, please.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote. I will abstain.
Jason Perron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. At this time, I'd also like to acknowledge the retirement of Select Board Administrative Assistant Robin Solik. Robin Solik had been with the town for many years, probably close to, do we have a certificate? It's in my pile here. So I get for coming late. 21 years of dedicated service to the town of Southwick from 2003 to 2024. And this certificate will be presented to Robin on behalf of the townspeople and recognizes you as a dedicated public servant in the Select Board's office who addressed the needs of our citizens through your commitment to our town. Your many years of service is a testament to your sincere interest in making Southwick a better place to live. And that's signed by myself, Jason and Diane. So much appreciated to Robin and we just wanted to publicly acknowledge her service to the town. I think we can, is, is anyone else here for the 338? I think we can get started because we're running a little bit ahead of schedule, which is so unlike me, but let's do that. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Doing fine, happy to be here. There we go. Thank you for your time.
Pleasure.
I appreciate it. You have the schedule. It is basically a duplicate of last year with just a few deletions and filled in with different types of events. But basically, you know, 23 was really a pretty good season. We had some weather challenges. You know, that track tends to wash away and we rebuilt that more times in the last 12 months than we have since we've been there, to say the least. A lot of washouts, a lot of cancellations, but the events that we did get to run were well-attended. So it's a very, very good sign for the industry in general. So I feel very confident about that. The National went over great. We had about a 12, 11 or 12% increase over the previous year, which was up from the year before. So that's very good. It was great to have the flyover from the 104th again. They came back. They weren't busy protecting the president this year the way they were in 2022. So we were able to get them in there. We were one of only two events of the 11 that were televised globally by NBC. All of them are done by Peacock, but they chose us and one other to, to be the, the main ship carrier. And we remain the, the highest viewed motocross event on television in 2023, which is nice, but those people didn't come pay. Bragging rights is all we get from it, but, but as a result, it worked so well that they're now expanding it to four of the 11 events this year. And we're, of course, one of them. We're still at the top of that heap. So that's kind of nice. This year's, this year's race, the National, is about a week and a half, two weeks earlier, June 29th, which is great. We've had that weekend before, works out great. Online sales are considerably ahead of last year. A lot of that has to do with, we're now tied in with the indoor events, the Supercross, which started three weeks ago. And as a result, we get by osmosis sucked right along with them. And once they see one of these races on television on Saturday night, they say, hey, Southwick's coming up. And they start buying some tickets. So that's really good. But it's also a trend. We see a lot more every year, more, more and more online and a lot less at the gate, which makes me feel good not having that cash running around the, the place all day long with so many people around. So as I mentioned, 2024 is pretty much the same as, as 2023. We have some new additions. Jason, we're bringing the quads back for the first time in what, five years or something like that?
Maybe longer.
It's a new, it's a new organization and I'll be honest with you. I'm gonna rent the track to them and supply the manpower because I really don't know if they can afford to do it yet.
It's, it's interesting.
Well, listen, we, we have a position within the industry that we have to try to help as many of these groups as we can. And it's, I think it's our responsibility. So we're gonna give them a shot.
I was a former quad rider. I appreciate.
I know that. I know that. That's why I brought that up. So we're gonna give them a shot. There's a resurgence towards most of the motorcycles as we knew years ago with two-stroke. Now they're four-stroke. And, but now everybody wants the two-strokes back. So we're gonna dedicate one of the events to just two-stroke motorcycles, which will be a lot of fun. Word has gotten around, everybody likes the track. So now AMA District 2 asked if they could come up for one event. So they're taking one of the others that we brought, dropped down and the Wheel Life Rally Electric Unicycles. These guys are the craziest people I've ever seen.
An electric unicycle running around on a motocross.
They don't go on a motocross course. What I do is I set up a more docile track within the pit area and the wooded area. And it's really kind of sedate compared to what we used to.
Unicycles and trees. What could go wrong?
Done.
Yeah.
Electric unicycles.
And trees. What could go wrong?
Nothing. They've been there. We've done it before. I mean, they, it's amazing to watch these guys. I mean, the balance that they have.
Did you? Yeah. It's a pretty stupid.
Never seen them.
You'll, you'll have to come. It's in August this year, but it's expanded because now they've, they're really getting a lot of traction globally. And they've got riders coming in from Europe and they've got coming, coming from the West Coast and Canada. So it'll be
When in August is that?
August, uh, let's see here. August 3rd, August 4th, August 4th.
Okay.
So pretty much everything is the same. We have about the same amount of motorized events versus non-motorized events. We start about the same time. I have more open practices in there than we plan to run. But we take advantage of good weather and we cancel more than we actually have. But as we've discussed in the past, rather than come to you the week before and say, oh my goodness, I want to have an event this week, it's already approved. I'll tell you if I cancel it. So it kind of gives everybody a heads up of what we'd love to do in a perfect world. But basically that's it. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support of you and the rest of the town departments, the chiefs behind me, especially this guy. He had, he actually put some EMTs on the, on the, on the track for us this year and it was not only did it help us, but it made me feel that we're a little closer to the town and the town is closer to what we do. And we made sure that they were clothed properly. But it's nice to have the town groups there every week instead of, instead of just that one special weekend a year. It's nice to have them there on a more regular basis. I love it. I love it. And that's about it. Any questions from you folks?
You know, I'm a huge fan.
I'm all set. You got my curiosity with the unicycle.
Oh, you have to come by. Gail, you should come by anyway and take a look and I'll show you around. Bring a helmet.
The electric e-box.
Bring a helmet.
You have one?
A helmet?
A unicycle.
74, you think you're the head?
Oh, I don't think I'm gonna need a helmet either, so.
No, no, but seriously, I mean, those who have not come, these guys have been there and, you know, you really need to see what we've done in the eight or nine years we've been there. Now, we've been racing there as a family since 1974, but we took it over when it went out of business. And we've been running it since 20, the end of 14, first time we did anything with it was in 15, but we put a lot in there. And I like to take people who are involved but not involved out there and give them a ride around on the mule. Doug's been down there with me. Jason's been down there with me. The chiefs have been there more than me. And get an idea of the history, some of the things we do, why we don't do certain things and how we grow. And, and we, we, we have a lot of responsibility with that facility. And we want to make sure everybody knows what, what our intent is and what we're doing going forward.
I used to go to those in the 70s.
Did you?
Yeah, my brother, my brother wrecked his knees there, yeah. My nephews raced there, yeah. They wrecked their knees, yeah.
Well, we don't like to hear that, but it can happen. Listen, it's not a man be, pam be sport.
No, it's not, but carelessness contributes to that or a daredevil.
Yeah, we tend to have fewer of that these days. Back then, it was a little bit more of a renegade type of sport.
Exactly.
Right now, it's a very highly paid machine.
Yep, sure.
And these guys are some of And these guys are some of the most fit individuals in the world, yeah.
I've always said that to people between, you don't realize the type of training you need. There's no cardio, you have to.
No, it's incredible.
You have to practice that way to practice the race.
I was watching the football game last night, and I see these guys huffing and puffing, and they're working hard, I agree. But they get twenty-four seconds in between every time.
True.
These guys go for thirty-five minutes without a single second of a break. And they do that three times a day. Takes a lot out of you.
Is this course not big enough for snowmobiles?
Um, yeah, it is. Needs snow. Snows. We've never had, we've never had enough snow.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Yeah, first of all, our irrigation system, some of it goes back to the seventies. And I can't, and I, we have our own, we have our own wells. So we bring our own water in. Um, it would freeze. We did a uh, we did a mud bog there um with the great big monster trucks there about five years ago. And we, it was so well-received in the summer, we did another one in in October, November, and it got down to fifteen degrees. But I had to keep the water on to keep filling those ponds for the next day. And half of the place blew out, and I had to replace all of the pipes, so no, we're not doing that. That's not on the schedule. We'd love to, we'd love to, and you know, when the first weekend Keith and I came with our crew in tw- early twenty fifteen, there had to be a foot and a half of snow. And we had to bring in a dozer just to go around the track to see what our hit list would be to get the place back and running. And we haven't had that since. That was the only time. Yeah.
What, forty-two inches was gone in a day and a half?
Yeah. Yeah.
Carl. Do we vote on to accept this schedule?
You would be voting on it, but generally what you do is you at least give it a little bit of time where you make it uh contingent upon feedback from the police and fire chiefs. And you also provide copies to um the rec center and the school, so they'll know what the um the schedule's gonna look like, so they don't schedule incompatible events on the same dates.
Okay. Awesome. So we'll carry this under old business for next week.
Sounds good, you want me back here?
Nope, you don't have to make that.
He can zoom in.
And we have Zoom now.
I know, I remember from twenty twenty.
Please don't remind me of that.
Thanks very much.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, we have a note here with an invitation to the Southwick-Tollin-Granville Regional School District to um a meeting on February first at the Powder Mill Middle School Library to discuss regional agreement amendments. One of them is to shorten the name of the Southwick-Tollin-Granville Regional School District, but I'm thinking it's not.
SDG.
Well, you can't say that, we have to spell it all. Yeah, right, so um I think we should probably, at least one or two or all of us should probably attend it if we can.
Oh, yeah.
I'll be there.
Okay. So that's where we are with that. Um, and this has, it it's a, the discussion is around some of the regional vote cost allocations and how that's done according to our regional agreement. Um, and they'll have more information on that at that meeting. I came up there in the budget hearing a little bit, a budget roundtable meeting, it wasn't budget hearing, budget roundtable. Yeah. Okay. So we're on notice for that.
Yep.
And Chiefs Department. Discuss requests for SAFER grant.
Sure.
First of all, what does SAFER stand for?
SAFER, yeah, staffing adequate. Fire in emergency response. So this is a federally funded grant through um FEMA. This has been a grant that we applied for two years consecutively, and unfortunately did not receive any funds. Um, part of the agreement to apply for this is that you have the support of your local town in taking on responsibilities of this grant. Um, what's unique about this grant is that it's designed for uh specifically what your needs are, so you're hiring within your department, so we can tell them we need five people, we need fifteen people. Um, certain cities have gotten quite a bit, though. East Hampton was just awarded this past year. Worcester's received it twice now in two consecutive years. Um, but there's a burden as well, too, so the grant covers the first three years of base salary plus benefits for firefighter paramedic. And then after that, the town would assume the costs at the three-year mark. It's kind of funny, in uh, once you get the award, the clock starts. So you have a timeframe within that to hire, so what happens a lot of times is the departments will go and they know they're gonna be hiring one way or the other, so they interview their people, so you're allowed to supplant the employees into the grant. So what that means is if the town gets the grant and they want to use that for funding, they can, otherwise, if they've already made arrangements to pay for the employees, they can do that as well, too, as before you couldn't do that, you couldn't start the hiring process. So the three-year clock starts when the people are hired, so if let's say we're gonna be hiring three, we'd have to find three qualified candidates, and that does take us about three to four months on the fire department side of it. So it's a little short, but you still get the benefit of the three extra years. So the contest becomes, do we want to pursue this grant? We've uh again, applied for twice and lost. Um, there certainly is a need for staffing within the department, and I've already started to discuss some of that with finance committee for budget planning for the upcoming years. Um, but the other side to this is the formal presentation to the select board that says, you know, this is where we are, this is where we'd like to be, so a little bit of a a projected planning, but also looking at some of the finances of where we are, um, how the ambulance has impacted income for the fire department as well, um, both in the past and where we are presently, and then what we predict to be in the next couple of years. So this grant is one of those, yeah, say yes, go and get the grant, um, but it can always be withdrawn afterwards, if, even if it is awarded, for some reason, the town discovers a hardship or something, and couldn't couldn't support the the hire, they could make the change. But basically, we do need to have the support of select board and the town in order to move forward. I, I guess the one, I've never asked this question, and I've always been curious about it, both on the police and fire side, is there, say you were able to hire, and then we had a downturn in the economy and had, is there any penalty? So there is not, and um, so they would be employed for three years, and at the end of three years, if the town chooses to lay those people off or just fire them out right there, they can do that. Yeah. But for most towns have experienced it, that it fills a need, that's why it's adequate staffing, it's it's not surplus staffing, it's just to get you to the bare minimums and and it's, it is for career people, you can't be using it for call force. Um, the second part of this is we'll be applying for the AFG grants, assistance to firefighter grant as well, too. Um, but once we get a little bit better handle on that, and when those funds are available, we'll pursue that. Right now, the SAFER's open, so we can start to pursue that. What are your, what are the reasons for getting shut down last time? So I met with a grant consultant, because we do hire grant consultants, because it is, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of layers and things like that. Um, as best they can determine, there was a change in how they categorize your call volume. So Massachusetts has always used the Massachusetts Fire Incident Reporting System, and they are moving over to the National Fire System. The numbers we gave them for our fire responses was only the fire responses, we didn't include our EMS calls. Years ago, that's how it was differentiated, but they've lumped them all together. And so it ended up happening without lumping all of ours together. We're looking at departments that have four hundred fire calls versus departments that had sixteen hundred calls. Had you put all those together, you would have seventeen hundred calls, we probably easily would have qualified last year. That's what they surmise, based on what they've read. They don't give you a true reason of why it was rejected, it just is a lump projection, so it goes through three types of scanning. The first one is a computer scan. Um, the second one would be where they literally look at some of the qualifications, and then there's the peer review after that. So that qualification's period for the SAFER is where we were, didn't qualify this year.
Is it up to three full-time, or is three the number you would be applying for?
Still right now, three was the number we applied for last time. Um, and again, looking at our call volume and our demand, and what we've done for recent hirings, that would give us three more to put three on duty during the day. If you look at the NFPA numbers, the standards that they want as a department our size in the community our size is four. Um, but I don't know that if that, you know, that approach might be a little too steep for the town. Um, but that's something I want to be able to look at. Right now, I just want to be able to get the permission of the town, if that's their wish, to go forward on the application. We can change the numbers that's in there, literally is one area we change, you know, a three to a seven, or a three to an eight, whatever we need to do, because all the other information's put in there. It it's it's a lengthy process, and it comes up at the same time as your budgets and everything else, so it's like, geez, just load you up. So a little bit better prepared, there you're going into it, knowing that we have budget and the grant's coming as well, too. The grant funds, uh, notification of available funds is actually a little later than it was last year, too, because a little bit more room to work. Yeah. But one of the other biggest problems is it takes six to nine months to get these awards. So you don't know.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be great if it happened before town meetings, so you can go to town meetings, say, we didn't get this grant, but we still need, you don't know. So then they changed it, said you could supplant the employees into that, and then you can make your alterations necessary afterwards.
Used to be when you would apply for a grant, not just SAFER, but even even equipment grants, if you were, you couldn't supplant budget. So if you needed something and you applied for the grant, you couldn't put it on the warrant.
Yeah.
Because if you did, you didn't get the grant. But if you didn't get the grant, now you didn't have the money for a year for that piece of apparatus or whatever.
That's it.
And so it's a, you'd have to call a special after that to to do it, so. Um, further discussion?
No further questions for me.
None for me either.
Motion to support the request for the application for a SAFER grant for the fire department.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul and I.
Jason Perron and I.
Dan Geller.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Once chief, good luck.
Thank you.
Carl, any new business tonight?
No, my stuff is old business.
Jason?
We had a busy weekend, I haven't had a time to settle it all in yet.
I mean, unless you want to talk about the MMA conference.
That's old business now, it was last week.
Yeah, but we never had, we never carried it on the agenda and talked about it.
Sure, we did. Well, we didn't carry it on the agenda, but we certainly talked about it, but we'll cover it under old business, because it was last week.
Okay, I don't have any new business.
Nadine?
No, sure.
Good. So we'll move right to old business. Carl, you want to talk about MMA first, then we'll run down the list?
Sure. I mean, obviously, we had, you know, an enjoyable time with the representatives uh from the select board, our office, the accounting department, the finance committee and and other committees, so it was a good conference, a lot of vendors, a lot of things learned, a lot of seminars uh attended, as well as the trade show, where we brought back a lot of information from different state agencies and vendors that I'm going through now, and we're getting ready to distribute that out to the appropriate departments, as well as all the free pens.
Well, we have a standing order to never buy a pen in the town of Southwick, so.
So that, along with the fact that, you know, it was good for people to um uh meet up with people and network with people they might not have seen or hadn't met before, so it serves many different functions as a valuable uh project, and then, of course, there were the speakers, the governor, the lieutenant governor, um, hearing from the mayor of Boston, uh, hearing from the state, our national senators. So you really can't, you know, get to see that many people who influence public policy and spending in the state without going to that conference for those two days. So it is a great value.
Absolutely. Thoughts on your first mass municipal?
It was quite interesting. I'm actually going to look at all the presentations that I didn't get to go to, because these were all pretty good. Um, are they forwarded?
Yeah.
Those things, it's only the slides. So I have to ask you guys for the backfill on it then.
Yep.
All right, no, they were very good. I I did attend the um twenty-four-seven, you know, town redevelopment, that was really, that was the best one. Um, I did attend one um um equitable engagement, how to engage everybody in town. Few ideas on that, and um
Yeah, I wanna see.
The housing one, I thought would be kind of helpful for the housing production plan that may be coming up. It was quite daunting. I I like choke and uh.
Just a little bit of talking about housing, I heard on some of the other things, it sounded very daunting.
This was really daunting. For a cabin our size, pretty hard for the scale. Um, but all, I thought it was all very good. All excellent.
Diane, when they were talking about the housing issues, was was there discussion about the state passing legislation that would allow um more projects or housing to be put in without less local um regulation?
No, actually, this was all from the developers, not really, um no one there actually can state contributing, and they didn't even talk about that avenue of of things, the the leniency that might be coming forward, no. Surprising.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna be hearing about that at some point.
Yep, nowhere, I didn't hear it anywhere. So that was my take, pretty good. I'm anxious to see the topics for next, actually.
Sir, uh, I attended the municipal law one, as did Carl. Um, a couple of interesting things that came out of there, the chief might even be a little bit, oh, you you might not be interested in a few months, but um some of the things that came up is uh we, I know we, here and everywhere, in my other place of employment, one of the issues that comes up is with ordinance or bylaw fines. Well, come to find out, there is a way to, when people refuse to pay those, you can tack them onto their taxes. So, you know, that's an issue that I know, I don't know uh in the past that we've had with people with docs and stuff like that, not that I really want to go taking people's money, but when people don't want to follow the rules, and rather than going to court, they said, you know, it's gonna be very costly, there's a way to do a home rule situation where you can actually attack those fines as like a lien against someone. So they have to pay those fines, so I found that one interesting.
That's interesting.
The other one that came up was um, obviously, the cannabis thing was, they were talking about the the equity and the the zoning bylaws being uh um or or if they were overly restrictive or uh not financially feasible for folks. Um, so that one was interesting, because I've already been contacted by a couple of folks that are interested in looking, and there's nowhere to go due to our zoning. So uh, you know, that's an interesting one that, you know, we may have to may have to take a look at down the road, and I don't know how that would work out. Um, but um I think that was pretty much about it. Carl, did you have anything from that one that you remember that? Other than those?
Uh, well, I mean, I know the the other thing, Jason, they were talking about the um issue with um uh tax titles and making sure that Massachusetts may end up having to modify its laws based upon that Supreme Court out of Hennepin County in Minnesota, which relates to the um uh, I think that that's the city of Minneapolis, and there was issues about what you do when those funds come in and how you use them, and how you're just supposed to satisfy the um um, the tax lien part, so that's something that I believe the state legislature and the DOR will be addressing to give guidance to uh municipal finance-related officials in the future.
Then um unfortunately, the the one regarding unlocking federal funds was very very, very, very complex that I want to answer.
Blunting?
I wouldn't say blunting, it just, there was a lot more to it, and it was a lot more in-depth and kind of not really what I was looking for. I was looking more for, all right, who do I need to go to to say, hey, can you help us with this? This was a lot of like uh ta-tax related stuff, it was very I was disappointed that I picked that one, to be honest with you, after going to that one. The other one was um the Beacon Hill Basics, and that one was somewhat beneficial, obviously, really, the best thing it says is make friends with your representatives and senators, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so.
You're doing a good job with that.
We're right there, and um those were the, those were the ones I took. Mr. Mogul?
Well, I I stayed in my wheelhouse, I took one on uh cybersecurity. We got to meet some of the task force folks, some uh FBI folks, state police folks, and there's, there are some regional groups. Uh, FBI folks, state police folks, and there's, there are some regional groups that meet. And uh, at the government level, local government level to uh, swap war stories and best practices and stuff like that. And it was also about um. Incident response, if you have an issue or or something like that. So it was very, it it's a class that they have almost every year. So I've I've been going to it now for a couple of years. It's it's very, very informative. And it's a good group, including some folks out of um, MIT. Um, I went to the labor law update with. Nadine, always enlightening. There's always a couple of real special cases that they talk about and uh, Dean Moskos, who's probably the. The legend in labor law in Massachusetts, um, puts on that seminar. Um, he's also one of the founders of the J L M C. So. And I don't know what J L M C stands for, so I'm going with J L M C, Joint Labor.
Labor Management Commission.
Thank you. And then I went to one which was. I was pessimistic at first, but um, it was certainly the neatest session for me was um. AI in government and using AI to overcome staffing shortages and providing constituent services. And I've seen some of this stuff, this generational AI stuff. Um. But the guy posed a, in three statements and then a question. Created a whole working group on, it was on housing production. Um, and it then created a website and graphics and the whole thing. By itself. It wasn't perfect. Someone needs to look at it and fix it, but it gave, he gave it a couple of parameters and just said, go. And in three minutes, the website was up and running. And this was that and they had a graphic for the name of this task force committee and. It's, it's interesting and extremely scary at the same. But you know what, one of the, I I had, the gentleman was actually the C I O for the city of Boston. So it was, I had a conversation with him afterwards. Cities and government are in a great position to leverage. AI, especially some of the large public models. Think G P T four, Chat G P T and and uh, Google Bard and that kinda thing. Why? All of their data is already public by its definition. So if it doesn't have it, you can give it to it. Now, there's certain information we have that's confidential, I get it, but. On uh, by on the by, you wanna go get any valuation information from our assessor's office, ask for it. We have it, right? Well, so to give it to Chat G P T, you're not revealing any state secrets. Companies have a lot of proprietary data. They can't. Put that data into Chat G P T or Bard or any of those, because. Now, now Chat G P T has it and everyone can use it, because that's part of the deal. When you give it something, it owns it or can use it to. In in, to inference for other stuff. Um, and there's a lot of court stuff to come out of that with, um, and that's, you know, far afield of this with. You know, what is a derived work and whatever else, but this was original artwork. They actually, you know, one of the things he did at the beginning was, you know, show us a group of people at Mass Municipal. In a, in a room and it drew it. And a couple of people looked a little funny and a lot of people looked the same. And then the guy said, well, this room is not diverse enough. And the next picture came out, that was much more diverse. Um, it just, it's just, it's phenomenal what generational AI can do. Um, so that was a great class. Um, certainly was interesting hearing from the governor and the lieutenant governor when they put on their little. I forgot which one it was. It wasn't Delma and Louise, because they didn't drive over a clip at the end. But um. When they put on their their deal and, you know, they talked about some of what their plans are. It it was, you know, overall worthwhile weekend to to spend in Boston to to take in some of that stuff. And it's also. As Carl said, a lot of the networking with with peers, I know, um. You know, walking around with Carl sometimes is kinda like walking into cheers with Norm, because Carl knows about every single town manager and. In the, in the Commonwealth and they all know Carl. But you get introduced to a lot of other of your peers. And get a chance to have a conversation. Hey, what are you doing about this? What are you doing about this? And, you know, how are you handling this? And so there's a a lot to learn there. Um, and a lot of good information to be gotten. And like I said, I think this year with the app, they did a way better job. Of providing the presentation materials, because there was only three time slots. There was one of those time slots, I wanted to take five of the six classes, but at least now we have the presentation.
drawback with the, what they, there were, like I said, fortunately, you just took labor law and then, uh, you know, one of the other ones, but.
We were spread out.
Yeah, we did a good, and we had a good group of people and we we did spread out quite a bit. And we'll all have to get together and kinda update ourselves on what we did. And we did some of that. We can, I mean, that's nothing that's on our agenda. So this all stuff that you can talk about. Informal, you don't have, we don't have to convene a meeting to discuss the MMA, because it was all, it's all general stuff. There's nothing directly on this board to deliberate. So. Feel free to reach out to myself or Jason or anyone else that was there to kinda have a conversation, you know, what did they, and. Get that feedback, because I think everyone's gonna have a good angle on what they took, because everyone, when we we chatted about it. Um, on email and and whatnot before, and even at lunch, when we were deciding what classes to take. We didn't have to say, no, you can't go to that one, because you have to take this one, because no one else is going. Everybody had their own interests and and kinda went in that right direction. I thought it was great. So, alright, that's the MMA. Nadine, how did you, this was your first MMA, yes?
My first MMA.
What was your takeaway?
I enjoyed it. Um, like you said, walking, I walked around with Carl a lot, so I did meet a lot of people. He invited some people over to. To be introduced to me. Um, so I was able to, he did.
That was his continuity.
So uh, I got, I had a lot of introduction. I took a D E I class. Um, I know some people struggle with what is diversity, equity and inclusion, and they had a really simple. Explanation, um, diversity is being invited to the dance. Equity is being asked to do. And inclusion is dancing like no one is watching. So that's your simple. Definition of D E I. And then I went to the labor law conference with you and uh, Carl and I attended How to Be Happier. At work, um, which was a lot of distance. Looks good.
But you can share that with grumpy people.
I can and I plan to. Carl and I know.
Should you have any grumpy people?
I know, they're hard to find around here. Um, and I also. Did download all of the PowerPoint presentations, so if you, I was putting, I'm just. Kind of putting them together and scanning them for whoever wanted them, so. You're up, Jason. Um.
Take them all.
So I have them all already, ready to go. You pulled them off the side already. Okay, if you already did it, that's good.
I did.
I'll take it. I got them. Okay.
Awesome.
Throw them in a file, you don't need to print them, you can just go on through them.
Email them, yeah?
I can email them all.
Same paper.
I did, I missed this one in the, in the new business. Do you want me to go back and pick this up?
I was going to bring you back to it, if you want.
We're gonna pause before we run down the list. We have a, a letter from an email, sternly worded, just kidding. Carl, do you wanna talk about the email from Secretary Gobi?
Uh, well, I I I forwarded to Lisa to hit to hand out, but it basically. It is, is looking for input of what the town and the board thinks are important. Categories that they should be advocating on our behalf for. So I think the board should um, you know. Uh, take an inventory of things they think are important and maybe bring that to the next meeting. I didn't get the sense that uh, I think we have a little time to get it in, but they're not gonna wait too much longer. I know, and of course, I know we we met with Anne, she came to town hall. We had that big group meeting and she got a chance to know us and see us and meet us, so, you know, we're on a first-name basis with her.
I I see that.
And she didn't run away screaming.
Um, it says, if you have not already sent, did she ask us for this list?
I don't, you know, I don't, it's the first.
Remember her saying something like that, but.
Well, no, but Diane might have to be talking about, they might have had other, um, they have, once in a while, they have these other like weekly meetings about. What's going on in the state, but I don't remember that issue being asked for, but it doesn't mean it wasn't. So I, that's why. I, when I saw it, I said, well, let's put this in front of the board tonight. And let's just get everybody thinking about what we think are important things for. That that rural uh, approach. And I I know, we know, you know, um, education funding.
Yep.
Number one and number two right there.
There you go. Well, that's, those are your big dollar things, folks.
Come back to those next week under, under old business, because that's a, that's a good point.
Yep, we don't, we don't need to make this long and complicated. It's basic meat and potatoes.
But it is.
Um, and if I can go back to Mass Municipal for one second, because my first stop every year at Mass Municipal is the lottery table. Not to buy a ticket. No, they were not. They um. Southwick, the uh.
I did see that.
Local aid from Southwick, which works out to be about nineteen cents of every dollar spent at the lottery, Southwick's portion, which. Um, is one point four six one million dollars last year. And uh, credit where credit is due, I never stopped to ask the question of how do they come up with one point four million dollars out of the total? Um, and the gentleman explained that it's under law, that it was a law passed many years ago based on. Uh, valuation of property and a couple of, and population and a couple of other factors that. The legislature has managed to mess with over the years, but that's the basic uh. Way that they calculate the the lottery distributions to uh, cities and towns in the Commonwealth. And the other thing I wanted to mention, because you'll be getting a phone call, Jason, we um, Diane and I, while we were walking the aisles, did. Come across a guy who has canvas canopy.
Oh, I've already got those.
Okay, well, he's gonna call you.
So here goes one of my old business topic, right there.
Darn it, because we found that guy at the. Good, so then now there's more than one choice, because we were looking for that and uh, that we asked the guy, they, he was showing a steel structure, right? And we go, do you have anything in canvas? He goes, matter of fact, I do.
I wanted both.
Yep.
He offered me some answers.
Correct, but at least we got that. Alright. Uh, on to old business, correct?
Yeah.
Let's do that. Police chief, job description and posting. Discussion.
Are you handing?
That's with all the changes back from.
From you, you were the last one who changed this.
Shocker. Bet I was last.
So I I believe what you have in front of you is is. Everything that the board has given uh, inputs to on the job description, which is gonna be an attachment to the uh, posting. Uh, but Jason wanted to have a a follow-up discussion on the qualifications, so. Um, you know, because we're only talking about two or three days notice, um, you know, time and the whole thing in terms of the posting. I thought it was best to bring it before the board again, and that's why it's still here.
So my question surrounded about after our discussions, um, I just do some reading. I actually went through the entire, uh, and I want to see patrolman's contract, but it's the police contract here in town. And at the very, I noticed that the job descriptions for the new sergeants are gonna be requiring. Requiring, at least the minimum, but associate's degree starting at twenty twenty-five. Chief.
That may be changed to preferred.
Maybe changed to preferred.
Contract, I believe it's gonna be preferred.
Okay, alright. Because that was my concern with it, if it's a required. Piece, you know, and we're gonna require for people coming from patrol to sergeant, so you know, I would. Say that would be something that we'd wanna be looking at as far as for, and we've talked about the education and what we need there. Um. So, you know, that was the big thing for me is I I caught that where it said required, I'm like, nah, I I can't in good conscience, if it's a required. Topic, say, we can't require it of our chief as well. Um, so that was my concern there, but if the chief's telling me that that may change. Uh, when, when that was brought forward, what was it, who brought it forward, what was?
Uh, in our union talk and I've been some of the cleaning up language of things, I believe in one of, one of the things that's on the table is changing that language.
Okay.
Right, and and folks, point of order, we can't be, you know, we're still in uh, active negotiations with the party, so. We really can't be discussing that part of it in this proceeding.
Well, my, like I said, Carl, my concern is, it it's pretty much put to bed maybe, but um. I was curious as to how it, it came to be.
Well. Again, I'm I'm not gonna talk to the, to a contract negotiation. The other aspect of what Carl's talking about, he's he's a hundred percent right. But I think. You know, in the current contract that we have, so that's public record, is. We had instituted um. Some, and and in previous contracts, many years back, the state had had supported a uh, the Quinn bill. And and what that was, then the state defunded the Quinn. And, you know, we've managed to keep up with some of it, but then over the years, it kinda diminished. And then in the last contract, um, now expired, we did establish back. A funding mechanism or a pay mechanism to reward officers that had. An associate, a bachelor's and or a master's degree. And the thought process was that if we are going to promote. A strong bench such that we enable the promotion of officers through the ranks of the department. And we're, we may not require it, but it's certainly a preferred thing to have a degree. That. We, and and that would be beneficial in the role all along, whether from patrol to sergeant to lieutenant to chief. Well, then we should pay for it. And and so we've had that negotiation with them in the last contract. And we established that, um. There was a bit of back and forth on it as part of the process to get there, but we got there. Um, that being said, we just, we had this conversation the last round of of. Um, in the chief discussion, and it was, I I don't remember how it ended up where we are, but I also think. You wanna give the commission as the appointing authority to the chief and the sergeant and the lieutenant. The best possible candidates. And sometimes, a candidate can approach the board or approach a position with a unique set of experiences. That far exceed what you get in the halls of a university. Um, there is um, a poster child for one of those in this room tonight.
There is.
And, you know, I think the town has been incredibly well-served by this chief. He's a fantastic human being. He's been a great leader of the department. And if we had a requirement that this was required, that you had to have this, we wouldn't have had the benefit of his service.
Well, you like I said, this was only brought to my.
I, and I, I'm not minimizing anything you've said, and that's how, and I think.
I even said that last time, that you don't have to have a degree to be a great police.
And I think that, I I one hundred percent agree with you. I also think you're starting to see a trend. And we're seeing it in some of the officers that are coming into the department. Is they're coming into the department, with the, especially with the. Um, destruction of the reserves because of post and everything else, that you're starting to see folks come into this. As a career, something that they want to do, and you really have to wanna do it now, more than. This is not a fallback career anymore. It's something you gotta wanna do. Um, they're coming to us out of Westfield State or out of wherever with um, a crime justice bachelor. Um, and I think it's something that, you know, we should, I think, so it always should be a preferred type of thing going into into a role. Um, but I don't know that we should require it. And I, and I, and I also think you're, to your point, though, it is a, it is a strong point that we shouldn't have it for one position. And not another one. It should be preferred, it should be preferred at every step or required at every step. And, you know, I just made my opinion known as to why I haven't required it. Or haven't asked to require it as my, you know, from, as my put forth. Um, and certainly, it's the board's prerogative to 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 change it, if if it so wishes, but that's my reason for the argument of why we wouldn't.
So I made the, I mean, I made the exact same argument last time. You know, I am not of the mindset that you should absolutely have, you know. Chief Landis is a prime example. I did not have a degree when I first came in, yeah, you know, and I, I'm not gonna pat myself on the back, but. Think I do a pretty good job where I work, but um. You know, it's not something that I don't, I believe should be a requirement, but my concern was it's there. And I'm like, okay, hold on, you know. We need to find out what's going on there. So um, and if, based on. The possibilities of something possibly changing there, you know, that would be a little more concerning as well to me. So um. I, these, that's why I wanted to discuss it.
Sure.
You know, the word required was sitting there, so I was, it was, you know, like we said, we can't go from here and then say, oh, no, not here, but not here, but here. So.
And I think you have a great, you know, you have a great opportunity to, you know, if you have a candidate, a set of candidates in front of you and. All things being equal, and one guy has a master's degree, I think you put credence to it. If, 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 but you have a a a candidate that has a bachelor degree, but they're, other than that. And you've got a rock star candidate somewhere else that doesn't have that, I, you know, I think at the end of the day, you really weigh that out and make the right decision. and you've got a rock star candidate somewhere else that doesn't have that, you know, I think at the end of the day, you really weigh that out and make the right decision for, for the role, so.
For one thing, it just says master, preferred master's degree, could that be in art? It doesn't define what it has to be in, for one thing.
I don't have it on here at the moment.
Preferred master's degree, period.
Yep.
Or that's for our job description.
Common language, you'll see where that is in related field.
So, yeah.
I mean, like, yeah, I mean, common ones would be, from what I've seen is masters, crim just, masters, MPA.
Yep, business administration, psych, psych.
MBA.
Political science has been in there.
So that's a good one to touch up.
Yeah. As far as required or preferred. Are you saying it says required?
In the previous contract, did it not?
Current contract right now.
It was to go into effect at one point.
It'll be, right now, it'll be required twenty twenty-five. It's not at the moment, so the next round of promotions probably won't, won't be a requirement.
And I would go with Doug on this as preferred and let that be our.
This was just for discussion, I was not, my concern was, you know, you know, we can't, you want it for a lower position, but yet not a higher position, and, and as the chief said, it does say twenty twenty-five, but if it does go into effect, then that's something that would probably have to, and the next go around would have to be considered for other positions, in my opinion, if it stays. But that's where my concern was with it, like I said, that word hit my eyes, I'm like, uh. So I just wanted, that's why I wanted to talk about it. I don't, again, it, it was tough for me to even bring it up because it contradicts what I said.
I hear what you're saying, but I.
Yeah. But, and I said at last, that's exactly what Mr. Mowgli said. I know plenty of police officers who don't have degrees, who are of rank and, and are excellent police officers, excellent supervisors. I also know people who have degrees that have, can know common sense.
Yeah.
Can't get themselves out of the paper bag.
But I've had some folks that you call doctor that are, fit that role to a T, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so by sense where we are, I think everybody, everybody keeps to agree that we're not changing the wording.
We're not moving the question.
Okay.
For the posting or the job description?
Well, we, we need to, we need to make sure we're all in agreement on this job description so that we can attach it to the posting.
Correct.
Correct.
So.
But we're just going to add in a related field.
Yeah.
Okay, so and that's going to be after the word master's degree?
No, it already says related field.
No, it doesn't, and it says, so.
The experience is in a related field.
But you know what?
Education, not the.
If it's prefer out, just only because we were running so good on time and now I get to blow it up, under that, does it matter if it's preferred? So would it be preferred someone with a master's degree, if it were art, it's still a master's degree? Or would you put it in a related field?
Yes.
Yeah, related field, it should stay, similar to the, right, you know.
No objection.
Of experiences law enforcement or related field, so that should go there as well.
Master's degree in medicine somehow isn't going to help us here in the police people.
Oh, sometimes you could always use a brain surgeon here or there.
Okay, that.
You never know.
That one you want to save.
All right, there you go, interrelated field, carry on.
So just, yeah, just work, just add the word you want, hand it to Nadine, and then we'll be clear on the act.
Is that the only remaining change left with this?
That was the only outstanding, but it was an important clarification that we wanted to revisit.
Absolutely. Yep.
So based, and so we did that out of, you know, a board member wanted to revisit it, we revisited it. Okay, so that part's done?
That is, I'm waiting for the motion to approve the
Job Description.
Count of Southwick Chief of Police Job Description as amended on January twenty-second.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
And you, and you will have handed the worded edits to Nadine.
I'm watching it happen right now.
Okay.
And.
So that'll get posted this week then.
Okay, and, and that, and we had already given the CAO the authority to post and set the dates of posting and due dates accordingly. So we, no need for us to vote on that.
Correct.
Okay, town clerk, internal posting and pay range. Carl, any update for us on that, or we're still?
Yeah, there's, there's still some other pay range stuff, we're looking at another, another source, I just want to make sure that we've really researched that, so we're going to pass on that for now.
Very well. Not much to do on the SRO request with the school district at this moment?
No, is there something you want to keep there?
No, why don't we move that to goals and objectives? Because then in a couple of weeks, we will have a meeting where we go over goals and objectives. Board evaluations and appointed progress?
There's progress. I got a document back from Nadine and Carl. Honestly, I haven't had time to review it yet. I'll do that, start that tomorrow, and then have you guys have a whack at it. Do you want to see it with their notes or after I? A lot of that with questions, who's the real person that does this?
I defer to, to your expertise on that and would rather see it.
I'll clean it up, condense it.
I, I finished product, I'd love to, or semi-finished product that we just say yay or nay on is, well, wait.
Great, okay.
I think pretty much we've already had our inputs have been done.
Stay tuned.
Okay, high-speed update. We did meet last week and got the direction back from this board to that board, and we've formed two minor subcommittees of that board to, to establish the IMA with Westfield, and then another funding group to go after some grants. And one outlying question, actually, it came out of Mass Municipal, one of the classes. Yeah, we need to determine whether the town is eligible in this funding round that's in March to April, or we have to wait until twenty twenty-five to apply for a community compact grant for community fiber? Because I think towns can only get them every other year, and we just got a bit of wind this year for the cybersecurity. So we're going to have to check. It won't be a problem because we'll still be in the construction phase certainly in twenty twenty-five. But other than that, that's the update for high speed, and so they're going to be at it for a little while, and then we'll come back. We'll meet again as a full board of the high-speed internet. And then we'll come back to this board once the IMA is ready for discussion and, and review. One teaser is, I have not put any thought into this, but somebody did ask me, and it's worth putting out there. If anyone wants to think of a name for Southwick's municipal network, send me an email.
Shall I put that out to social media?
I shall, or you shall, either one, it doesn't, well, we got to be careful. But, yeah, it's a good idea. I think it, I, and Cliff, the one I sent you, I was kidding. So I think it would be a good idea, let's have a little contest to, to name it, and we'll figure out a way to, what we're going to do with that. Anyway, Whip City Fiber is going to be, you know, that's one thing to think about, but I think we probably can put our own little spin on it. Marijuana dispensary webpage posting, HCA process and template.
I'm sorry, I was writing. Where are we on that? I gave the template of the changes to you guys. Carl was going to see about Jim Middleton getting those on the website. I did not check it today to see if there was any change.
I didn't either. I didn't have a chance today. Because we have to be on the front page, right?
Yeah.
It's not there today.
Applications and forms, did that, if you go there and then go to select board. Other forms? More? Nope, you still have the same. Nope, so nothing there yet. And then Ben Coyle also was hoping to very soon get some additional examples from his own municipal lawyers association on different agreements and applications that we might be able to use, so I'm still waiting to get back, hear something back from him.
Did I not hear they're saying that the template for MHCZ is supposed to be out any day now?
Somebody said that.
I heard that this weekend.
Again?
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to throw it out.
That's what they were saying.
I was looking for Mr. Stevens, and I didn't see him. I was going to tease him.
Well, I heard, I heard that, I just thought they were talking about March, but yeah.
Well, that's fast for the old bunch, yeah.
Well, they said nay, but.
Hunting bylaw, I haven't heard back from the STD. Land license, we are moving along with that. Last general law, chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B, right of first refusal. Thank you, Diane. I did see some motion on that from the attorney. So hopefully we'll have some more info coming soon.
I did give him a word document that he was going to pencil in stuff.
Good.
In, in the total context, he thought it was very good. He was just going to change some of the legal wording, I think, on things.
I think it's going to be a good discussion.
Hopefully that's coming soon now.
Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Town administrator recruitment panel meetings and job description review, we're in pretty good shape there, right? We're just waiting for the consultant now to do their thing. Carl, Nadine?
We have a timeline.
You, you have a schedule that came out from the consultant about what the process is and when and so forth, so a big part of that, Doug, will be your participation on that board with Chairman Putnam. So really, this is, this is sort of in Mr. Putnam's realm at this point in time to go through the process with the, the prospective candidates. And I know that part of the discussion talked about how they've been sent, the question is, because I ended up seeing the consultant at the municipal conference.
Yeah, we ran into him a few times.
A number of times.
Yeah.
That looks like February sixteenth is about when the committee should see stuff.
Yep.
So that's.
And then a month later for us.
Yeah, so when you see their, their timeline, that's going to be obviously by the time you're entering into an agreement with that person and starting the process, I would have been gone by then, so.
Correct.
What have been?
Yeah.
But, you know, just so, and, you know, just to keep it clear, the, the responses to the ads were due last week. So that, that part of the process, you know, we've been marching along, this part of the process is complete. So now the, the consultant is going to review those and start vetting candidates to see where that pool lands us, and then send, send some of their candidates to the, the subcommittee, in order, the panel, in order to whittle that down further, to send several candidates to the select board for public interview and a decision.
I was happy to hear that he had a lot of responses. That was good.
Seventeen.
That was good, better than some of the other towns recently.
Ten Mass, three Connecticut, California, New Jersey, New York and Ohio. So one candidate holds both a Juris Doctor, Juris Doctor degree, masters, ten masters, one holds a Juris Doctor and a bachelor's, and three with bachelor's. I'm going to be very interested to see that.
T-Mobile hometown grants application review authorization and pursuit.
Well, you ruined it.
Sorry, I'm sorry, we were thinking about you the whole time, though.
Well, I was, I saw it, I was, I'm like, yes. I told them I've been looking around our area and I can't find anybody. So we've done that, done that. I'm going to be very interested to see what this possible liquor, ABCC, or whatever the government was talking about. Well, it had, it had some positive connotation coming from it, but.
There's always, I've been watching this play out down in another state that has much more some very different liquor laws with licenses, and where the licenses trade in the millions and millions of dollars, they're like taxi cab hack licenses used to be. And they're trying to reform it, so there's a lot of inertia. It's just like a lot, you know, there's a lot of great ideas that come about, but there's, there's powerful interests that have at force there that, that come to, come to play in before legislation gets done. So, you know, any type of, you know, when you start increasing the number of licenses and stuff like that, the current licensees get, obviously.
A little nervous.
Yeah.
Like when they reenact, when they, what was it? Twelve years ago when we enacted the picker tax and then it went away pretty fast?
The sales tax, remember that? Yeah, that was in, in force for what, ten minutes, a couple of quarters?
I think it was two years, you know.
I don't think it was two years, yeah, I think it's gone very quickly. So, anything else to go over tonight before we go to exec? We are going to go into executive session tonight. I had, well, I had two quick things. One, I did the radio show last week, which was great, and talked about a few different things there, and that, letting you guys know, I have a meeting this Thursday with the Park and Rec Chair to talk some generalities around what we're doing in that space, and as, after that meeting, I'll come back and report in open session to you. Okay, we are going to go into executive session. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one's two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, section, Chapter two fourteen, Section one B, Labor Council, Litigation Matters and Strategy for Collective Bargaining with Police Union Coalition, Fire, IAFF, DPW, Non-Union Staff and Clerk Union, UPSU, interim CAO, Executive Session Regarding Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, two and three, and Chapter two fourteen, one B, and not reconvene in open session, and that the chair moves to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and not reconvene in open session. Declare that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and not reconvene in open session, and under exception three, to move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And the chair moved to go into executive session to conduct strategy. Sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and not reconvene in open session. And move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, and the chair declared an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the body and not reconvene in open session. A person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial or serious interference with their privacy, and the Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award such damages. There is a roll call vote to go into executive session. Doug Moglan, aye.
Jason Perron, aye.
Thank you, aye.
Okay, hold everything.